We're actually one minute, a little bit early. I would like to welcome Director Pinkham, who has joined us. And Director Pinkham would like to say a few words with our new mics.
Katia Lio, I just want to say good evening and apologize for my late arrival. And I'm sure everything went splendidly with my other colleagues here and were able to handle business while I was away. But I just wanted to quickly announce that I think I'm having as much trouble as our other directors up here finding a place for a community meeting. Even went to go look at the Shoreline Library up in King County or across the city boundaries, and that too was booked almost all the way through March. So I still will, once I get a place, I will let you know when my next community meeting will be. So just bear with me and glad to be here now. So just thank you, Director Peters, for the time to allow me to say my piece.
And Director Harris wanted another moment.
I haven't read it yet, but apparently it's posted in The Washington Post that none other than Eli Broad has been encouraging senators to vote against the Department of Education designee. What very, very strange times we live in.
All right. And with that, let us now move to the action portion of our meeting. Okay, so the first item we have is the Kids in the Middle Grant from the Nessholm Family Foundation. And that came to the Audit Finance Committee.
And we moved it out on January 12th for approval. I move that the Board authorize a superintendent to accept the Kids in the Middle Grant funds from the Nessholm Family Foundation in the amount of $554,534.
I second the motion.
Michael Stone, did you want to come forth and take any questions or comments about this particular item? Does anybody have any questions or comments about it? Director Harris has a comment.
During introduction, we talked about the fact that the three schools that have received really terrific assistance from the Nessholm Foundation, Denny, Aki, and Mercer, are doing great things and that we can try and replicate some of those practices. Do you still agree with that proposition?
Yes, I do agree with that proposition, but there is the funding that goes with it.
Director Blanford.
I'm just wondering if you had any comments that you wanted to make?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Nland.
I need to, I just want to thank again the Nessholm Family Foundation and their recruiting of the Sattlerberg Foundation and their disappointing partners.
If there are no further questions or comments, Director Petu, did you want to say?
No.
Okay. Ms. Ritchie, the roll call, please.
Director Blanford.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director Gary.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
Director Petu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Peters.
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. So item number two on our action items is the K-5 English Language Arts Adoption. May I hear from the committee chair on that item? We can, we'll do the motion in the meantime, right? Motion in a second.
I move that the Seattle School Board approve the K-5 English Language Arts Adoption Committee's recommendation to adopt Center for the Collaborative Classroom for instructional materials for all K-5 Seattle Public Schools classrooms. I further move that the Seattle School Board authorize a superintendent to purchase Center for the Collaborative Classrooms as core instructional materials for all K-5 Seattle Public Schools classrooms in the amount of $5,600,000. In perenns, $4,800,000 out of the fiscal year 2017 and $800,000 out of fiscal year 2018 budget and perenn. If the state legislature does not address current funding concerns, including relief of levy loss and additional funding to mitigate staff layoffs, the district is authorized to fund a phased-in purchase and implementation within the funding limitations according to a restoration plan developed for the 2017-18 budget, which would identify when expenditures for this adoption can proceed as a part of the 2016-17 and/or 2017-18 school years.
I second the motion.
All right, now we'll go to the Chair of CNI.
This came through CNI January 9th, was moved forward for consideration after multiple times coming through CNI as part of status updates.
Good evening. Good evening, Michael Tolly, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. And there has not been any changes to this particular item between introduction and action. I do want to note again, as was read into the record, the motion has been divided into two parts. The first part, asking that the Board adopt the instructional materials, but as was discussed at the budget meeting last week, Wednesday, we would recommend with the second motion that the purchase of the materials would be dependent on funding availability and the restoration plan moving forward.
Any questions or comments? Director Burke.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions regarding the funding and the timing of the funding. Has it been established, what is date certain that funding would be required by, to be able to correctly or properly adopt this in full? Is there a time sequence?
We did look into that, and I was under the understanding from our purchasing office that it would be around the May timeframe that we would need to move forward with the purchase in order to meet the requirements for implement, having all the materials in place for the start of the 2017-18 school year.
Thank you. And as part of the discussion that was had, I want to be really sort of respectful of the balance between building needs, building wants, and our budget. And I think it was covered in much greater depth, the idea of using capital dollars for capital-eligible schools to fund materials and using Title I or LAP dollars for those eligible schools. Is it going to be a requirement for those capital or title-eligible schools that they adopt? Or is that something which is going to be more discretionary?
About a year ago, we made revisions to the School Board policies governing instructional materials adoptions. And in that, we made it very clear that a year prior to and then a year after adoption, we would not recognize any consideration or consider any consideration for a waiver of the adopted instructional materials. I say that to answer your question, yes, there would be a strong expectation that all schools implement the newly purchased and adopted materials. I would go on to say that, of course, staff is recommending that we do a district-wide case, a K-2 implementation, rather than having it broken out among individual schools like Title and those schools with capital dollars. So we would make every effort to try to make sure it went in that format of a gray level implementation, rather than distributed unevenly across the system.
Thank you for that. And then, this was also mentioned previously, but I just wanted to be consistent in messaging around it. For schools that would be, where we would be potentially applying capital or title or LAP dollars for that, these are, my understanding is that these are amounts which are not, will not limit the discretionary ability of building leaders. So basically, we're not pulling money that building leaders have allocated to other things. This is district-controlled.
It is. These are funds that are part, a percentage of the actual opening of a new facility or for that purpose, purchasing of instructional materials, yes.
Thank you.
Director Blanford.
Director Burke's last question. I heard your response that these funds are directed by the district, by central offices opposed to individual schools, so there'll be no financial implication to individual schools. Is that correct?
It is. In terms of the fact that, and I might have to have my colleague Flip Herndon assist with this part of it, but my understanding is that within the capital-eligible funding, yes, schools do have a process that they would go through to make sure they were purchasing instructional materials. But for the purposes of this purchase, it would be purchasing instructional materials that have been recently adopted. And so in that light, then, it would be the district being more directive in terms of what would be used by the school for K through 5 English Language Arts.
And thank you for that response. It brings to mind a prior adoption that we did, namely math, that there were a lot of issues that popped up primarily around the fact that individual school communities were asking for waivers because they wanted to continue to use the current materials that they had, as opposed to new materials that the district was encouraging them to use. And as a result, there was a huge number of waiver requests that came in all at once. Do you have a sense that that, I understand your directive comment, that we're not going to allow that to happen this time. What I'm more concerned about is, had we allowed it, would there be a number of waivers? Do you believe that we would have a lot of requests for waivers from our schools?
I don't, I do not believe we would, primarily because our schools are in strong need of instructional materials for K-5 literacy instruction.
Right.
And so that, this is something that is a need within our schools, and they would be grateful to receive them. With the math adoption, we really didn't honor any new waivers, but we did have a number of existing waivers in place, and we allowed for those to continue. And we actually, for those schools that had the need for additional materials under the existing waiver, we did provide funding for those materials. But that, we would be consistent in that expectation with this adoption as well.
Okay. So I understand your response to be, there is a pent-up need for new materials that folks would be very eager to bring on new materials as opposed to our past adoptions?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, well, I would just like to say, again, I'd like to appreciate all the work that went into this process. There's been, I've heard nothing but good things about it. People are very enthusiastic about the end result, and I understand there was unanimity around what was finally selected. We've talked before about when was the last time we did language arts adoption for K-5, and whether it was 2002 or 1997, it was between 15 and 20 years ago. So to be able to bring some new materials to our schools that are starved of materials is a very exciting, exciting moment. I understand that the extent to which we can do this will depend on the amount of funding we have, but I appreciate the creativity and resourcefulness that's going into this sort of rollout from, with the help of Jolynn Bergy and others. I just, finally, I'll just say that, again, I think we really need to make instructional materials a priority in the district. It has to be a fundamental focus, because if we did nothing else but have good teachers and good materials, that would be something, you know, that we could start with. And we're not even doing that exactly. And so this whole budget crisis has given us a chance to really study where we allocate our resources and see what's fundamental. And I think we can keep coming back to this question about how can we justify not investing in instructional materials for our schools? And one last point, this is not an either-or. This is not a choice instead of investing in our teachers, in addition to. I just want to make that clear. So I'm very excited to be able to support this. Thank you. Director Blanford.
Whereas it's not an either-or, I think it's important for those who may not have heard the many conversations that we've had on this subject, to realize that the second part of this amendment or resolution has more to do with how it's sequenced and what conditions need to be in place. Originally, we were talking about a adoption that would take place regardless of the funding crisis that we're currently facing. And as a result of many conversations, we've gotten to a place now where it is contingent on funding actually coming to us, which is an important consideration, given the fact that we have this large budget deficit that we're dealing with, and we have some responsibility to our staff and more responsibility to good education operations, to make sure that we have staff in place in our schools to use these new books and actually produce results for our students. So I'm glad that we've gotten to this point, but I think particularly for those who may not have seen the entire sausage-making operation for us to get to this place, a little background is necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, or are there? No? Okay. Ms. Ritchie, the roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director Gary.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
Director Petu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Blanford.
Aye.
Director Peters.
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
Fantastic. All right, let's move on to item three. That's the BTA Resolution 2016-17-4, Racial Imbalance Analysis for Magnolia Elementary Renovation and Addition Project. Let's go to Vice President Harris for the...
I move that the School Board approve Resolution 2016/17-4, certifying that the proposed Magnolia Elementary School renovation and addition project will not create, but will minimize racial imbalance as defined by WAC 392-342-025, as attached to the Board Action Report.
I second the motion.
Okay, may I hear from the committee chair?
This item was heard by the Operations Committee on August 16th and moved forward for approval.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about this item? Director Harris.
I'm wondering if Associate Superintendent Herndon can speak to some of the constituent testimony earlier this evening, please?
Yeah, Associate Superintendent Flip Herndon for Operations in Capitol. I'm actually going to have Richard Best address most of the questions that came up. He's been working directly with OSPI on this.
So yes, Director Harris, I did hear the earlier testimony. We have been in conversations with OSPI. If you remember, at the time we introduced this, Director Pinkham asked for some idea of what the boundaries would potentially look like. Working with enrollment planning, we developed four boundaries. Enrollment planning, worked with the building principals at Co., Lawton, and Catherine Blaine K-8, to make sure that the boundaries made sense, from a geographical standpoint, from a school capacity standpoint, and then also to try to minimize disruption to our families that currently attend those schools. We presented those boundaries to OSPI. We noted that we would not be creating a Magnolia Elementary School that was racially imbalanced. And the three existing elementary schools, Lawton, Co., and Blaine K-8, are all currently defined as racially imbalanced. From a district perspective, Lawton Elementary School will go from a racially imbalanced school to a racially balanced school in all four of the scenarios that we reviewed with OSPI. At this time, we have been engaged in no community conversations. Those community conversations are scheduled to begin in March of 2017. We also need to open our bids to construct this project in March of 2017, and completion of our D-Form process is a requirement by OSPI, or we will end up forfeiting their funds. And for this project, the funds are $2.3 million. So we need to go through, we need to submit D-5, and we need to submit D-7 prior to March when we open bids. The language that you are being asked to approve was developed with OSPI. They made some edits to this language. I know anecdotally, I do not know, I was not engaged in firsthand conversations, but I do know anecdotally that they reached out to the State of Washington Attorney General's Office. So I can add that as well. So this language has been vetted by OSPI, and we're asking you to approve it, and they will then continue on in our D-Form process.
Director Harris?
Could you say in a few short sentences what D-5 and D-7 and D-Form processes mean for folks, please?
OSPI has a D-Form process when you receive state construction assistance dollars. And there's a requirement of about 10 to 15 items in each D-Form submittal. We, the school district, submit the odd-numbered D-Forms. OSPI, when they get our D-Form submittal, will return a D-Form noting that your D-Form submittal is complete, and that's an even-numbered D-Form. So we need to submit D-Forms D-5, receive D-6, submit D-Form D-7, receive D-8, and then we have OSPI's permission to open bids, and our bid submittal then goes in as D-Form or D-Form 9, so.
Director Blanford.
And at the risk of putting our audience to sleep, I know that you have given us, because I've heard the conversation a couple or three times, a quick but powerful description of what it means to be racially balanced or racially imbalanced. I'm wondering if you can do that again.
Yes, I can give that. We are a district that has a greater than 50% minority population. Current enrollment has a 53% minority population. To be a racially imbalanced school, you would have a difference of 25% from district minorities. So in the Magnolia and Queen Anne neighborhoods, we have predominantly white community, and it's greater than, 25% greater than the 53% minority population that we have in Seattle Public Schools.
Okay. Director Petu.
So one of our, so one of the speaker mentioned something about, that he had asked to see whether you can rebid this project for lower price, and I noticed that he had also said here that you couldn't rebid because it would go, prices would go up.
So Magnolia Elementary School, Director Petu, we requested a budget increase at the last School Board meeting. We have not yet bid that project. That project goes out to bid middle of February with bids opening the middle of March. We increased, requested a budget increase because we anticipate, from working with our cost estimators, that we'll get higher bids than anticipated, so we wanted to draw that to the Board's attention. We did a construction cost estimate, a construction document cost estimate at the end of that design phase. Now we're ready to go out to bid and then hopefully award that project within the revised budget that you approved at the last School Board meeting.
So he said something here that if no school district rebids, then all district will overpay. Can you explain what that means?
Well, his comment was surrounding the budget increase, I believe, that you approved at the last School Board meeting, but we have not bid the project, and I think there was a misunderstanding on his part. Loyal Heights, we did bid. We came in over budget. We had anticipated that project to bid at budget, and so we recommended approval of that, because if we were not to approve that, we would be going back to redesign that project, and we would then be, end up postponing Bagley and Queen Anne, and we'd have added costs associated with those projects as well. So that's why we recommended going forward. We do rebid projects on occasion when we come in over budget. We have to look at what the sequence is of our projects and what the potential impact is when we delay a project. We would have delayed with Loyal Heights, if we had rebid that project, we would have delayed Queen Anne Elementary Schools additions and Bagley Elementary Schools additions by one year. We need the capacity in those schools and those areas, plus the added costs associated with delaying those projects for a year would have erased any savings we'd have had by rebidding Loyal Heights. And so that's why we recommended at Loyal Heights that you increase the budget and accept the bid.
Thank you. Director Blanford.
Mr. Best, a couple times in your response to Director Petu's question, you said, "We came in over budget." But my understanding is, we didn't come in over budget, the bidders came in.
Correct.
Over budget, right?
Correct.
I think that's an important distinction, because it, to the average person that doesn't attend Operations Committee meetings on a regular basis, it might appear that we intentionally are coming in over budget, and that's not the case. It's a recognition of the fact that in the construction community currently, there's lots of work, and so prices go up, and there's limited...
Bidders.
Bidders and limited amount of steel and all the other things we need in order to construct a building. So am I correct?
Correct.
Tell me if I'm wrong on any part of that.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Director Burke.
One of the things that the, that sort of has resonated with me for a while, and I, maybe I'm reading into it a little bit, but the comments around the racial imbalance, we have, we have a fundamental contradiction with a neighborhood assignment plan in a racially imbalanced city. Is there guidance from the state or OSPI or models that can help us work towards balance when we're inherently unbalanced to start with?
It's a good question and a challenge.
It's a good question and a challenge, certainly, because if you start to draw boundaries that would then equate to the balance that you might have, there is no doubt that you would probably not have neighborhood schools because the neighborhoods themselves kind of sort out, and you might end up with boundaries that look very much gerrymandered to someone from the outside thinking not boundaries of inclusion, but boundaries of exclusion during a different timeframe, is what you could end up with. But it is a challenge, there's no doubt. I don't think there's a great solution, and the conversations that I've been in briefly with OSPI, they recognize it's a challenge too. Not every district has to face this same challenge either. There are some districts that pursue capital projects without state construction assistance dollars, so if you don't have to go through that process and the D-Forms, then you never have to go through that. There are other districts that just don't pass bonds or levies, so they, they're not even in the position to do that. And then there are other districts that are, don't meet the criteria of being over 50% minority either. So, we definitely face some, some unique challenges. On top of that, clearly, is our growing city and the changing demographics. And if you looked at some of the attachments, you can also see that the diversity of our district is also changing in a way to not be more diverse, but in many ways, less diverse. Be that as it may, we're still a major metropolitan city, and we have some challenges to meet the needs of all of our students. And I think it's a great conversation to continue with our city leaders as well, and how we look at how we interact with the city, neighborhoods, housing policies, all that. We don't have an impact on that, but we can certainly have conversations about what our schools look like based on our housing policies throughout the city.
Thanks for that comment, and I really appreciate you bringing it back to conversations with the city, and especially indicating that to our city leaders that there's this process that we have to go through to approve our construction projects, and there are inherent things in our city demographics that make that more difficult.
Director Harris?
Not so fast, Associate Superintendent Herndon. You gave us a great segue. At some point, hopefully in the near future, can you discuss what rating we have with the city and the mayor's task force and density? Do we have a seat at the table on the Hala Advisory Committee?
I'm not.
And/or do we want one if we don't?
I'm not aware of that. I can tell you, in the past, I have had conversations with some of the folks around the city's comprehensive plan, which does include housing, and they did seek our comment and input at least on housing and what, how that might impact us. As far as the greater committee or the kind of specific committee on Hala, I'm not aware of a seat that we have there, but I'm not aware of lots of seats we may have somewhere else, so.
May I follow?
Sure. Director Harris?
Can, can you take a look at that and see whether we can have some consistent representation and, and horse trade if need be with the city so that our voice and the needs we have are heard?
I can certainly have that conversation with some of our city counterparts.
Thanks.
Director Pinkham?
Mine, I guess, the question gets into the point of, again, this requirement that it will not create or aggravate racial imbalance. And then, you vetted this with the OSPI, and they said it's okay to use the term minimize? They accepted that?
They've accepted that. They've reviewed this resolution. And Director Pinkham, I would just say, as one of our arguments was, is when you look at the district from a whole, we're actually reducing, one of our schools will become racially balanced that is currently racially imbalanced, and the school that we are creating is racially balanced. So, from a district perspective, we're actually, have a gain there, and so, that was one of the arguments that we were putting forth with OSPI. And the language that you're being asked to approve has been vetted and approved by OSPI for the resolution.
Yeah, because this is for accepting dollars for Magnolia, so, but then we're including, because I did ask about, okay, how the other boundaries change and what the impact that would have, so I appreciate your effort doing there. So, when then this, since it's dealing with Magnolia, and that will be a racially balanced school, isn't it just better to say, "Yes, we are going to build a school that won't be racially balanced" versus trying to pull in all this other language?
The other language is required by the state statute, and so, that's why it's included, so.
All right. I just want to speak to something that, Mr. Best, that you said. I really appreciate the fact that when you're drawing the boundaries to, for this new school or this, well, I guess it's new in that we're reopening it, you're making boundaries that make sense. Because as you can imagine, there are families that are already anxiously watching this project, and they want to know how that's going to impact them, specifically families who live on the West Queen Anne Hill. So, I would be very interested in being apprised of that development, and I know the families who are already coming to my meetings are asking about that. I also appreciate your comment that you want to minimize disruption, and I would be interested to know what the plan is for doing that. And again, I'll ask that grandfathering be a consideration wherever, wherever possible.
Okay, thank you. I will share that with Ashley Davies.
All right, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, Ms. Ritchie, the roll call, please.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you. So, we now move on to the introduction portion of our agenda. We do have quite a few items today, this evening. We have 16 items. A few of them are going to be presented by the same staffer, and beginning with the first two, so, in the interest of expediting the process a little bit, I'm going to ask Jolynn Bergy to introduce both of them, and have our committee chair also speak to both of them, and then we can have discussions with, about both of them. So, the first one is the adoption of policy 61, 6101, federal cash and financial management. May I have the motion and the second on that, please? I'm sorry, it's intro. And then the second one, thank you very much for the reminder, adoption of policy number 6201, allowable costs of federal programs.
Both of these came through A&amp;F on January 12th, and they were moved out with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, Jolynn Bergy. Both of these policies are technical in nature. They're being introduced to comply with new requirements under the new Uniform Grant Guidance, where new federal regulations are requiring us to put into actual policy practices that the district has had for a long time. So, both of these, the first one being cash management, the federal cash management policy is whereby districts have to have a method to track how many dollars are drawn down from the federal government. We do that on a reimbursement basis, so we spend the money and then we ask for reimbursement. If you have a different procedure than that, there's a limitation on how many interest dollars, interest earnings you can have on those dollars that you draw down. So, this policy actually formalizes the process that we've had in place for many years. Again, it's a requirement by the new Uniform Grant Guidance. The second policy was written regarding allowable costs for federal programs. This simply complies with all the legal requirements, saying that we're only going to charge allowable costs to our federal programs. Again, something that we've been doing all along, but now required by the feds to have a policy. These policies were WASDA policies that were drafted, and with very few changes, we're introducing them tonight for board approval.
Director Harris?
New federal policies. We've heard a great deal on the front page of our newspapers in the last two weeks that we are going to get rid of two sets of regulations for everyone. We've heard a great deal from several designees in federal departments that we're going to scrap what potentially has been working. And then we heard today from the Seattle City Council drafting a resolution to change their banks with Wells Fargo, given their consumer protection violations and their support of the pipeline project. Do we bank with Wells Fargo?
I would have to check, but not, I don't know of any. I believe we bank with US Bank.
Are there any other questions or comments? I have one question. Will either of these policies mandate any change in practice?
No.
Okay, so it's just formalizing something that we already do?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So, the next item, it's item three, approval of contract RFP 09614, 2017-2020 bus transportation services. This went through Operations Committee?
Which heard it on December the 15th and moved it forward for consideration.
Peggy McAvoy, excuse me, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. As you know, over the fall and over the winter, we had been working on our transportation service standards, art, to make sure that as we had a request for proposal process, that we would be able to ensure that we had as many bidders as possible. However, we were not successful in that. And I want to acknowledge Kathy Catterhagen and the Transportation Department, as well as the Contracts Department, because they worked very hard to try to actually encourage as many bidders as they possibly could. With that, the contract that is coming before you will be allowing for the support of either the two-tier or the three tiers that you have identified for the transportation service standards. So, what you will see is a contract that will identify up to a certain number of buses, so that if, in fact, we are able to find the external funding, we can go ahead and ensure that our vendor can provide that service as far as students. So, I would like to introduce the Director of Logistics, who did the negotiations on the contract, Kathy Catterhagen, to give you some details.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Nyland. Kathy Catterhagen, Director of Logistics, and the item before you is the recommended RFP 09614 contract. This is the result of a competitive solicitation, and it's for to and from transportation to schools, it's for field trips, athletics, and special programs. The contract is for a period of performance of three years with two optional one-year renewal periods. In the RFP, the district sought a contractor with high-level, quality bus drivers, driver training and experience, a solid safety record, strong bus and maintenance program, and excellent service at a fair and reasonable cost. Previously, the board had made clear a desire for a bus company that could attract and retain the best drivers. And in negotiations, first student has raised the bus driver wages, and next year's drivers that currently make $16.50 today will make $18 an hour to start. The more experienced drivers will make up to $24.40 an hour, and that's over 50% of the drivers. The drivers also participate in a performance-plus-bonus program that recognizes safety attendance and performance. They receive ongoing safety training, an annual student management training to ensure they know how to work with our students and issues that do occur on buses, in addition to meeting all the requirements for their state license. And as Peggy said, this is an up-to contract. The district will only pay for the buses that we do put into service. Currently, we pay approximately $67,121 per bus per year, and that will increase to $74,514 per bus next year. And I don't know if Jolynn wanted to speak to this, or Jolynn Bergy wanted to speak to this or not, but I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Director Pinkham?
Do we have an idea of, like, how many other drivers will be putting in 30 hours or more, and then how many are in that 20 to 30 that won't be getting health benefits?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I do have that information, and I'd be happy to send it to you.
Thank you for the work and presenting it to us. You had mentioned that this is a three-year contract, initial year with two options to renew. We heard constituent comments asking about potentially considering a one-year contract. What is the process should our circumstances change? For example, if we can't do a three, a two-tier this year, what is our flexibility for next year or the year following to either change the tiers, change the provider, change, what is our flexibility under this agreement?
We have a lot of flexibility in the agreement as far as the terms and conditions. We're, we're pretty well set in that area, thanks to our legal department. Because this is an up-to contract, we have a lot of flexibility, like, if we were to run 366 buses next year with the full three tiers, we, we would just pay for those 366 buses. If we ran less, we're not impacted or penalized if we ran less. If we went to the two-tier and ran 398 buses, we would not be penalized. We just need to, towards the end of this year, after we do our routing, advise the bus company how many buses we'd like to schedule in in the following year.
Director Blanford?
In the Operations Committee, when we were looking, considering this issue or this item, we had lots of conversation about the fact that there are not a huge number of providers of transportation services in our region. We spent a fair amount of time trying to dissect why that is, and the primary reason, my understanding, the primary reason for that is there's a huge threshold cost to get involved in this community around being able to purchase land, because you've got to park buses, and if you can't get access to land, which is at a premium these days, then it's difficult for people to actually come into the market. That question came up primarily because, you know, we're believers in competition and want to see lots of bidders for, for our, our work, and have been troubled by the fact that we consistently get one provider, and particularly hearing the fact that, from some of the employees of that provider, that they don't feel adequately compensated. So, I think it's important to, to share that piece of information. And one other piece of information that I would share is, quite accidentally, I happened to walk into this room one afternoon while there was a safety training going on with the bus drivers, and it was shortly after the terrible and tragic accident that happened in Tennessee where several children lost their lives because of a bus driver. And so, it was, I found it very serendipitous that I could walk in the room that, at that moment, and actually see the types of trainings that our bus drivers are, are getting, and it left me feeling very heartened that they are receiving adequate training, both in how to navigate through our streets and how to. and how to run a bus, but as well around how to manage kid-to-kid interaction, which sometimes can be quite distracting on our buses. And so I just wanted to appreciate your staff for providing those types of trainings. And I assume that everyone that's coming on board gets those trainings and gets them in sufficient quantities that we can ensure a high level of confidence and security on our buses, making sure that our children are safe.
Thank you.
Director Pinkham?
Along those lines of safety, as probably regulations and stuff change, I know there's also been talk about mandating seat belts in school buses. If that happens within the time period of this contract, who would be responsible for that cost? And I know there's also talk about getting the technology, getting buses outfitted with touchscreens, computers to help with the transportation, you know, those costs as well. Again, just going through this, are those kind of costs included in this contract?
We have optional costs for the tablets. If in the future we decide to add tablets to the buses, that is not included in our cost today. That technology is not as developed as we would like to see it before implementation. And we don't want to be putting bad information out there. We'd rather use the tools that we currently have and provide the best information to the parents and the schools at this point in time. As far as the seat belts, I just spoke with First Student about that, and they are going to investigate that law. And if it is required, of course, we'll have to comply and we'll cross that bridge with them when we have a full understanding of it.
Standing about potential cost increase for that?
Not at this time, but...
In our first read of that legislation, it is if in fact a new bus is bought, then we would have to have seat belts on that new bus. So right now, they're talking about when a district buys a bus. And so there's a little bit of non-clarity out there about districts who actually have vendors who provide the service, whether or not they will be encumbered by that law. So those are some things that we're looking at right now. But it's certainly part of our process as we're talking with First Student.
So I appreciate the context that Director Blanford gave us about why we only ended up with one bidder here. It's still, though, a troubling situation to be in and obviously not ideal. So thinking back to a comment that was made during public commentary about, well, why wouldn't we then just do a one-year contract rather than three in the hopes that maybe there would be more competition in a year? Can you speak to the pros and cons or feasibility of that?
Based on the information that we have today from the current vendors that we've been in contact with, my personal opinion is that we wouldn't get any better results a year from now than what we have today, based on the fact of the cost that's involved for starting up a new bus company in the city of Seattle. We could look at it again a year from now and see if that's a possibility. And the flexibility in our contracts with the terms and conditions, we could move that way, but I wouldn't recommend it at this time.
One of the discussions that we've been having related to capital is is there a way for us to look at actually owning our own property that other people could use to put buses on? And so that's part of the conversations that we're having in order to try and solve that problem. We don't have a final answer for the board. And if in fact we were going to be able to purchase any property, it probably wouldn't happen in a year, because remember, we have to start the bid in November. So I think it would be a couple-year process for us. But do know that it is a problem that has been identified, and we are looking for solutions so that we can increase the number of bidders that we do have.
Thank you. There's no further questions or comments? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item. It's item number four, approval of three, 2016-17 International Union of Operating Engineers, IUOE Local 609 Unit A Salary Schedule effective September 1st, 2016. And that went to Operations Committee?
The Operations Committee heard this item on January the 19th and moved it forward for approval.
Thank you. Stan Damas, Executive Director of Labor and Employee Relations. The proposal here is to approve three amended salary schedules in the Local 609 contract. The current agreement has a provision that calls for a joint comprehensive compensation study prior to the 16-17 school year. Work began on this project last summer. And the contract also called for an analysis to be done of the data obtained through the salary survey. And state law required us to participate in negotiations with the International Union of Operating Engineers. That process carried on through the fall. And we worked carefully with Local 609. And we found a number of positions that were below market, based on the study. We found others where we were at market. So we tentatively agreed to an arrangement where many of the positions that were below, and they're identified in the bar, dealing with gardener's, landscape assistant, and apprentice custodian positions, for example, we would move toward the market rate by 3%. It doesn't get us all the way there, but it gets us a fair piece toward it. There's one position, which is the resource conservation specialist, which had a significant change in job duties over a period of time. And we were at significant risk of losing employees because we were substantially below market. That one, the schedule calls for about a 10.6% increase for the employees. The bar includes an equity analysis, which notably points out that 74% of the persons covered in this bargaining unit are persons of color. So that gives you some indication of where the dollars are going. We're recommending approval of these new rates to be effective, retroactive to September 1, 2016, as negotiated. Any questions or comments?
Apparently, there are none.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
So the next item, it's item number five, approval of capacity management actions for the 2017-18 school years. May I hear from the Chair of Operations Committee, please?
The Operations Committee was particularly busy on January the 19th. I'd like to thank my fellow committee members, Directors Gary and Pinkham. There are several items that will be moving forward, many for approval, but you should know that hopefully I'm not redundant. This item was moved forward for approval on January the 19th. Oops, I'm sorry. They didn't get it wrong. It's for consideration.
So Richard Bass, Director of Capital Projects and Planning. This is our bar that we present before the board every year to allow us to do our annual enrollment growth planning and to meet the needs of kids who we are projecting to show up at schools in the fall of 2017. We work closely with our enrollment planning group to look at what our enrollment trends are. You can note that at K-5 and K-8 schools, we are looking at adding approximately 1%. We're anticipating approximately 1% growth. At our middle schools, we're anticipating approximately 3% growth. And at our high schools, we are anticipating approximately 4% growth. With several elementary schools coming online, Cascadia, Olympic Hills, Cedar Park, and Decatur, and with Robert Eaglestaff Middle School and Meanie Middle School coming online, we are able to address a significant portion of those elementary and middle school enrollment growth. You can see that we have our largest needs at the high school level. Lincoln High School will come online in 2019. But we are looking to place four single portables or two double portables at Ballard. We're also looking to place four additional single portables or two double portables at Roosevelt. And we have a problem that we need to continue to work on at Garfield High School. When we look at the enrollment there, we look at a need for eight classrooms, and we are continuing to explore that at this moment in time. The cost of adding these portables, from an annual capacity standpoint, is $1,685,000. And then added on with the program placement of relocating bridges to Ingram High School of $640,000. The total is $2,325,000. And so we are coming before you tonight. Introducing this in two weeks, we'll be seeking your approval. It's important to get your approval so that we can begin spending money on design fees to note where these portables are going to be located on-site and begin our efforts for permitting with the city of Seattle. So we're in a position to begin this work as soon as school lets out in June. So I'd open it up to questions or comments.
Director Burke?
Good evening. Two questions. The first one, I see the challenge at Garfield. And I noticed that it has a cost impact of zero. So how does that work with? Do you anticipate coming back with something in two weeks that has a different cost?
No, I anticipate coming back probably after open enrollment includes in February, Director Burke, with some revised numbers. We just, at this moment in time, don't have a solution for Garfield, and we're still working on that.
Okay, so to clarify, that would come back in a separate bar? Just administratively, it'll come in a separate process?
Correct.
Thank you. And then the other question is, what is the class-sized numbers that were used to generate these projections?
They were the projections.
Are we using contract maximums, or are we using reduced class sizes?
We're using the revised budget, I believe, that you approved in January. And it should be noted in here, it was a change. I know that we are using the revised budget projections that you approved in January.
Okay. I guess I want to drill into a specific thing. If we, should we somehow, through wonderful legislative work of Director Gary and other folks that are pulling hard on this, find some money that gets us back towards class sizes? Is that going to further impact beyond this?
That will have a significant impact, because we need to begin this work now in order to get through our permitting process. It is a significant concern. It is one that we have highlighted to the Office of Teaching and Learning that we need to move based upon these revised class sizes.
Thank you.
Dr. Nyland?
I guess we're not, hmm, I'm public. We want to remain very optimistic about all of our gap that we need the legislature to recognize. And I'd like to be optimistic about that. But if we're going to handicap this, I'd say that the odds of getting the funding for our staffing is pretty good. So I do understand the dilemma. That, you know, do we go forward and spend a bunch of money when we might not need the space? Versus if we do have the staff and we don't have the space, then that's a challenge as well. So I don't know if there is a happy radical middle in there, but we are under court order, and I believe that we'll get something from the legislature.
So we will develop also a Plan B and review with staff and maybe try to get that before you, prior to when you take action on this.
I have one question. So under the student benefit and equity analysis, and probably elsewhere, it says that Garfield will receive relief from the reopening of Lincoln High School in fall 2019. Can you explain how that, why that would be so?
I'm going to ask Associate Herndon, Superintendent Herndon, to answer that question.
And by way of context, I see that the same sentence is said for Ballard and Roosevelt. And that makes more sense to me geographically, but I'm not quite following the thinking here.
Yeah, so I think part of that is the conversation around the high school boundaries that are related to Lincoln High School. Since we don't know what those are, we don't know what the domino of changes that might happen in boundaries are, because the conversations around the high schools will evolve beyond just Lincoln High School. There's conversations about Garfield area and Franklin, and pretty much all areas of the city we're going to be talking about. But as far as this particular bar goes, this is just an interim capacity for next year. So really, the opening of Lincoln is not going to bring relief next year for Garfield, clearly, because it's not until 2019 that it comes online. But the conversations about what the changes to high school boundaries might look like will be coming. That's something that we're looking at to have for you by the fall of 2017, so that you'll know. That's one of the pieces that we talked about for Lincoln High School.
So is there the possibility, then, that the Lincoln High School boundaries could extend down into the Central District?
I don't know. Probably, I don't know, quite honestly. When I look at a previous map of when there was a Lincoln High School, there was also a Queen Anne High School. And we don't have a Queen Anne High School, which did have an impact on the boundary of Garfield. So I don't think that the Lincoln boundaries themselves may extend over that far, but the Garfield boundary is quite large. So it comes over quite a bit that, in my opinion, extends beyond the central area and gets into downtown, which has quite a few folks as well. So that's where I'm not quite sure, you know, if the westernmost boundary of Garfield might be modified with Lincoln. I think there's just a lot of conversation to happen about that.
Right, thank you. Director Pinkham?
So I recall an email that we got from someone that had this long list of all the schools and their capacities and their enrollments. And the point of it was that seems like they're saying, well, your high schools have the capacity, it's just that we don't have the boundaries drawn correctly. So Garfield's being over-enrolled while another school's under-enrolled. So when Lincoln comes on, will that be hopefully part of the process to help alleviate over enrollment and under enrollment at schools?
It will certainly help. In addition to that, we have the other capital projects, which are the 500-seat addition at Ingram, which certainly helps as well. But again, part of what was said in that particular email is true, which is why we're looking at the high school boundaries all around. There are some challenges that we know there is some under enrollment as far as size goes. Rainier Beach has room for more students. Cleveland has room for more students. And there are quite a few students in that particular area, but the balance between those schools is not great. So that's why we're going to take a look at that. Garfield is large, but part of that is programmatically related as well. So when we look at the schools and the boundaries, we want to make sure we're examining not only... only the number of students that are within the attendance area boundary, but the programs that are located within there as well, and draw additional students from outside the particular boundary area. So there's quite a bit that's involved in that. But I would say, right now, there are not too many high schools that are under-enrolled. I think if you talk to the principals at Ballard and Roosevelt and Garfield, Ingram's filling up, they all feel pretty full. There's not a lot of room there. So, and the balance between, you know, South and West Seattle is getting closer, but to draw a boundary that draws students all the way over to South and West Seattle can be a challenge as well. We're trying to look for the good balance.
Yeah. Thank you. And I just want to appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, did anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. Thank you. So the next item is the purchase of projectors for new Bex 4 schools and BTA 3 projects opening summer 2017. This is also an Operations Committee item.
Which heard this item on the 19th of January and moved it forward for consideration.
So this is to purchase some interactive projectors for the new Bex 4 schools that will be opening this summer. And in addition to that, to purchase interactive projectors for both Cedar Park Elementary School and Decatur Elementary School. I will note that the purchase orders in the bar attachment add up to 252,000, approximately $252,000. We are working on the purchase orders for both Cedar Park and Decatur. We anticipate bringing to the Operations Committee in February a bar to create budgets for those two schools, and then bringing that to the board in March. We would like tonight to introduce that we will be seeking budget approval for this to include the interactive projectors for Cedar Park and Decatur. And so that's why you see a request of $315,000, not to exceed $315,000 in lieu of the approximately $252,000 that the purchase orders add up to that are included with the attachment. So I want to draw that to your attention.
So the 252,000, that's for two projectors, is that right?
That's for Cascadia, Robert Eaglestaff, Olympic Hills, Meanie Middle School, and McGilvray. Lipton Springs is included in the Robert Eaglestaff allotment. So that's the 252,000. We're asking for approval up to 315,000, because we know we're going to need to provide interactive projectors also at Cedar Park and Decatur. And we're working on that at this moment in time.
So how much is it for one project, projector?
Projector, just crystal projector costs approximately $1,400.
For what projector?
For one projector.
Is that a cost? I mean, have you actually done comparison in other places?
We've installed these projectors at Genesee Hill, Arbor Heights, Thornton Creek, Hazel Wolf, and Seattle World School last year, Director Patu. We bid this project, so we have a competitive price. We had two vendors submit bids on this, and we're asking for your approval just to utilize the lower purchase price that we received on a unit price basis. And we want to include Cedar Park and Decatur as well, because we know we need to provide similar technology at those schools.
Okay. Thank you. Are these projectors the same thing as smart boards? Or is it different?
No, this is newer technology. Director Peters, we're going away from smart boards and going to interactive projectors.
I only just caught up to smart boards. Okay. And could you just briefly tell us the advantages of this new technology?
They're very similar to smart boards, and in lieu of being mounted to the wall like a marker board, they're actually an overhead projector. They shine an image on a marker board, and then you're able to interact with that image. So very similar to the way you would do it with a smart board. They're also substantially cheaper.
Oh, they are?
So you're getting the same functional capability at less cost. It's the way, really, technology's moving, is towards interactive projectors in lieu of smart boards.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Director Burke?
So I see from the specifications, this is a short throw projector. So is that built into our design now that we're using a short throw projector? And do we use that for retrofits as well?
Correct. We've been... All of the Bex 4 schools have been using the short throw projectors. The BTA 4 capacity schools will also be using the short throw projectors. We are in our annual capacity projects, you know, with the bar that you just talked about, we're adding one at a time. We are reusing existing projectors that we have. We still have an inventory of projectors that we're continuing to use, and as we move schools around, we're continuing to draw upon them until their useful life.
Okay. Thanks. Mostly, I'm asking kind of in a geeky way, do we get a lower cost of ownership? Or are there advantages to that technology versus a traditional, like what we have here? Or is it just what's available?
This is a standard from our Department of Technology Services department, and so we are providing this, and we're providing it in all of our new schools. It's the way they're moving in their technology plan, so.
All right. I don't see any more questions or comments. Thank you very much. So now we go on to item number seven, multiple capital levy funds award contract K-5086 for General Contractor Construction Management Services, GCCM, to Cornerstone Contractors for the Ingram High School Classroom Edition Project. This also went to the Operations Committee?
Which heard it on January the 19th and moved it forward for consideration.
Excuse me. Operations Chair, can you speak to why it was moved forward just for consideration?
I cannot. I'm not remembering exactly. I would imagine that it is...
Was there something that was incomplete?
Yeah.
That was presented?
It was incomplete.
All right.
In almost all cases where the Operations Committee moved it forward but for consideration, it is usually because of incomplete documents.
So we've gone through a GCCM approval process. We were approved by the State of Washington Capital Projects Alternative Review Board to utilize GCCM construction for Ingram High School. That was approved, I will say predominantly, because we are going to have an active school when we are implementing this construction project. There's risks associated with having an active school onsite and the associated students, and so to minimize those risks, we thought it'd be great to bring the contractor onboard early, so he could hear the conversations about the project and how to implement the project, and he could share his insights into how we could best go about implementing the project. Cornerstone General Contracting is currently implementing Olympic Hills Elementary School. At Ingram High School, they'll be constructing the 20 Classroom Edition. That was part of BTA 4. They'll be also making seismic improvements and waterline... Seismic improvements that were part of Bex 4, and roofing improvements that were part of Bex 4, and then some waterline improvements that were part of BTA 3. So we're combining that into one project and recommending that Cornerstone General Contracting be the contractor to help us during the design phase to implement this project through construction, so. Open it up to questions or comments.
Is there a location online where we can look at some of, you know, the information on the project? I'm looking on the BTA 4 website, or is more on the concept plans or whatever has been created to date?
I can check with Tom Redman, who's our communications person for Capital Projects, and ask that we make sure we get this project loaded up, because we do have a conceptual drawing. We're in schematic design right now, soon to have completed schematic design, and so I'll make sure that we get that loaded up on our website. Director Burke?
Thank you. When you make that request, could you also include Magnolia? Thank you.
Yep.
Director Geary?
Could you... I was interested during the Operations Committee to hear about the approval process that we have to go through to get to use a GCCM. And I don't know if the rest of the board is familiar with that, so if you could very briefly describe that, I thought that was interesting.
So we are required to put together a submission package for the State of Washington Capital Projects Alternative Review Board. GCCM projects need to be approved by the Alternative Review Board for a public agency to use that construction unless the agency has approval. Seattle Public Schools does not have approval to move forward with GCCM construction without this Oversight Committee's approval at this moment in time. One of the things that the Oversight Committee talked to us the last time we made this presentation in front of them was, Seattle should consider becoming an agency in which we approve our GCCM projects. I do appreciate the fact that we have an outside committee that reviews our projects, but I'm also cognizant that school districts are moving more and more to GCCM construction so they can get that contractor input early. And their plate is becoming more full with more and more school districts requesting GCCM approval. And so, but there's five criteria that we need to look at. The five criteria concern complexity of the project. Obviously, when you're doing an historic renovation, or as Webster, historic renovation without drawings, that's a very complex project. When you're remodeling a school and keeping kids onsite, that's a very complex project. A large project like Wilson Pacific, approximately $75 million in construction, is a complex project, and to keep that compressed to a short, two-year timeframe. Olympic Hills had a complexity because of the groundwater table at that site. So there are varying factors that this agency will look at, and then will either approve or deny your application to use GCCM. Considering Ingram High School, they were unanimous that this should be a GCCM project. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you. So the next item is item number eight, Bex 4 Program Contingency Transfer to the Proposed Fourth Phase Jane Addams Middle School Repurposing and Seismic Improvements Project Budget. I hear from the Chair of Operations Committee, please.
This item was heard by the Operations Committee on January the 19th and moved forward for approval.
So we are requesting $2,175,000 be moved from the Program Contingency for Bex 4 into Jane Addams Middle School to complete Phase 4 construction activities. Phase 4 construction activities were identified in the original capital levy that went before the voters. There are primarily seismic improvements in our classroom, some low voltage and electrical improvements, and some security camera improvements. And so we're just recommending that we shift $2,175,000 from the Program Contingency into the Jane Addams Middle School. And it's what those dollars were set aside for, so. The Program Contingency dollars were set aside for. So open that up to questions.
Any questions, comments? All right. We'll move on to the next item. Item nine, Bex 4 Certifying Resolution 201617-11, five-year use, 30-year building life for the Loyal Heights Elementary School Modernization and Addition Project. This also went to the Operations Committee?
Maybe I can save some time. All the remaining items that are on the agenda were all heard by the Operations Committee on January the 19th and moved forward for approval.
Thank you.
So this is a document that we need to submit to OSPI to certify that Seattle Public Schools, after making a significant investment at Loyal Heights Elementary School, will use that facility for five years for instructional purposes, and will continue to utilize that facility for the next 30 years. I imagine for the next 30 years, it will be utilized for instructional purposes. So the board's asked to certify that that's how you'll use the building.
Why is it necessary for us to say that?
It's a requirement of OSPI, and I'm going to guess it's a requirement because there have been school districts across the state of Washington who have represented that they're going to use a building for instructional purposes, and then prior to this requirement, two or three years down after it was built, utilized it for another purpose, Director Peters. That's a guess on my part, but it's usually what generates these types of requirements. There's a significant investment that OSPI makes, more so with other districts than with Seattle. My prior district, Central KSAP School District, 70% of SCAP, you know, we were... We'd received 70% of a project from OSPI. So it's significant for smaller districts without as large a tax base. So that's why I'm sure that they have this requirement.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Director Pinkin?
I get used to this new technology, and my Netscape browser is really slow here. Glad some of you laughed, okay. Just curious, as, you know, when we do, you know, we have to tell the state that, yes, we're going to plan to use this building for five years as a school. Do we also then make any kind of commitment with our communities when they decide to, because I unfortunately bring up Loyal Heights here again, they put in, you know, money for new playground equipment or new resources? Is there any agreement that we make with them that, okay, yes, this will be used as a playground or whatever resources for X number of years? Because they're investment in it, too.
The self-help program doesn't report to me, but it's a great question, and I'll ask Gretchen Decker and give you a response back in a Friday memo to the board. I'm uncertain.
So just very quickly, if we know that there is a pending major capital project, and there's a self-help project lined up as well, we try and say... Try and figure out what the scope of the major capital project is so that someone isn't raising money only to have it then wiped out by a major capital project. We do try and do that. However, over the past few years, clearly, the speed with which we have capital projects coming on, trying to respond to our capacity issues, it has unfortunately impacted some of the neighborhood investments. And it's surprising, though, sometimes, too, because I think sometimes the sense of time goes quickly. So, myself included, you know, didn't I just do that last year? And now it's been already a decade since something happened. But it doesn't negate the major investment. We appreciate all the self-help projects, all the money that community put into our schools to make them great learning environments for our students. So we want to be very sensitive of that. But we do also want to make sure that they're not putting in a project that then is going to get wiped out soon.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right. Next item is item 10, Bex 4, BTA 4 Resolution 201617-8, Racial Imbalance Analysis for the Daniel Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Addition Project.
So this is a much simpler racial analysis resolution than Magnolia Elementary School. Daniel Bagley is currently a racially balanced... Daniel Bagley is currently a racially balanced school as defined by the RCW. We are not revising its boundaries when we complete the project in 2020. So we anticipate it will remain a racially balanced school when we open up the addition. The addition is primarily replacing existing portables that are on-site today. So we don't see a significant change in the population with the completion of this project.
Seemed pretty straightforward.
Very straightforward, yeah.
Any questions or comments on that item? Thank you. So then the next item, item eleven, I think items eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Well, I guess it's, there's some similarity there. These are all related to the EC Hughes Project. So the first one, BTA Four, EC Hughes Elementary School Modernization Project Constructibility Report and Implementation Plan. And then the next one is the BTA Four EC Hughes Elementary School Modernization Project Resolution 2016-17-9 of Intent to Construct Project. And then the third one is BTA Four Certifying Resolution 2016-17-10, EC Hughes Elementary School Modernization Project, Five-Year Use, Thirty-Year Building Life.
And these are all required for OSPI Form D9 approval. All three of these documents, so your approval is required for us to open bids, so. Or actually, after we open bids, we have to submit these with our bid documents to OSPI, so.
Any questions or comments about these? Alright, thank you. Let me go right on to item fourteen. Now we're moving on to some other schools. BTA Four, Approval of Budget Increase for the Ballard, Garfield, and West Seattle High Schools Roof Replacement Projects.
Yes, and these are projects in which we are actually increasing, requesting the board to approve a budget increase. We have not bid these projects. Two of these projects, we are anticipating utilizing a purchasing cooperative. That would be the Ballard High School and the West Seattle High School because they are very complex roofing projects. At Ballard High School, we are replacing the entire roof. That was anticipated as part of BTA Four. What we learned as we did the investigation, which was also part of BTA Four, is the parapet walls that surround Ballard High School also create, allow moisture to intrude into that building. And so we are recommending that we increase this budget to address the parapet walls that surround that roof. And in addition, we are recommending that we also look at the standing seam metal roof on the gymnasium. So that is the scope of work that we're adding at Ballard High School. We tried to give you a drawing as one of the attachments articulating what was originally part of the costs defined for BTA Four. We knew we needed to do investigations at these roofs and so we've come, done the, implemented the investigations and we're coming back and asking for budget adjustments based upon our architect and envelope consultant's recommendations. And so at Garfield High School, we learned that underneath the roofing system, there are all kinds of openings that need to be filled. We're also asking that we replace an existing skylight. And then the City of Seattle Landmarks Board has requested that we use a fluid applied flashing at the coping parapet. So at the terracotta, we use a fluid applied flashing in lieu of what would normally be today as sheet metal flashing. That too has added approximately thirty thousand dollars worth of cost to the Garfield High School roofing project. At West Seattle, we have, we had included in BTA Four the north portion of the historic roof. It's a tile roof. We're also have learned that we need to come back and make repairs to the south portion of that historic roof. And there's, it's generally called kind of a widow's walk at the very top, it's about eight feet wide. There's some cupolas there. We need to repair those cupolas and also replace the roofing on that widow's walk. And so that's what those added costs are for West Seattle High School. So, so this is what those budget increases, the added scopes of work at all three of those projects. And I'm happy to open it up to questions.
Director Geary. The other use of contingency funds, was it also from BTA Four?
It was from, from BTA Four for Magnolia Elementary School. It was from Bex Four for Jane Adams Middle School. There are two different program contingencies based upon what levy the projects were approved in, Director Geary.
And I was trying to go back through our budget so I could answer this myself, but it wasn't in the one that was provided at the committee meeting. How much do we have in the BTA contingency fund and?
This would represent about fifteen percent and Magnolia Elementary School represented about fifteen percent.
And are we feeling comfortable then with the remainder?
I am, because I sat in a meeting yesterday on Lincoln High School and we believe we're going to be able to bring that project in within budget. And so I feel very comfortable with where we're at right now at this moment in time. So that is a huge project, BTA Four, so.
Director Harris.
Ballard, Ballard, Garfield, and West Seattle Roof Replacements. And again, time flies, I don't recall when we did these construction projects. But is there any way to take a look at clawing back under any of those roofing warranties whatsoever?
We do look at that on those types of projects. Ballard, I'm going to give you approximate timeframes, opened in two thousand. West Seattle, we didn't touch the north portion of the historic roof, so we always knew we had to come back and work on the north portion. That would be the same with Garfield. We just have learned a substantial amount more information than we knew at the time we went to the levy, with the levy, because we've done a fairly thorough investigation of those roofing systems.
So when I buy a new roof for my little house, they give me a twenty-year or a thirty-year, depending on how much I want to spend, warranty. What were our warranties for these projects?
I can tell you the warranties would not be, they'd be for materials only. And for Ballard High School, it, we looked at whether we can make a claim against that warranty and that insurance company. And it was determined it would not be money or effort well spent.
Thank you.
Director Pat Two and then Director Pinkham.
On that note, I know that there's warranty for other one of our roofing. And I was told that one of the roofing that we have, actually one of the school has, we've been having a hard time trying to get them to come out and honor the warranties. So how long do we actually wait before, you know, like this school has a hole on the roof? And, and it's been a while since we, you know, complained about it, so what, what do we do in that case?
If we're aware of a warranty and it's, we have a very good electronic data system that a custodian can put in a work order, it will either flag that it's a warranty or it'll flag that it's a maintenance repair. And if we become aware that it's a warranty, we let the contractor know right away. That hasn't been an issue that I'm aware of. I did invite Frank Griffin, the maintenance program manager. I can let him speak to that, but I'm not aware of any issues where we're not reaching out to contractors and their roofing subcontractors to get roofs.
Well, this particular school has actually been waiting for almost a year to get their hole fixed.
Which school?
This is actually John Mir. There's a hole in the roof on the gym and I was told it's been a year and I was just, they've been waiting to get it fixed through the warranty and for some reason or other, the warranty is not being guaranteed right now.
So, I'm aware of that issue. It's an issue where the contractor believes it was an existing issue, but we didn't have a leak there prior. And it's coming down through the louvers is what they're claiming. And so, you know, we're struggling with them to respond, so.
So I'm learning about this tonight and I will work with Frank and I'll find out who the project manager was and we'll reach out to that contractor. But I think Seattle Public Schools has a very good warranty process in place. I can share an example about Laurelhurst Elementary School where we had some window issues that came to our attention. Last year, we had the contractor come back, this is four or five years ago in which this project was implemented and he came back and replaced the, you know, repaired them to our maintenance foreman's satisfaction, so that oversees all of our window installations. So I wasn't aware of this and I'll follow up with Frank and.
I really would appreciate if you can do that, thank you.
In regards to Ballard and saying that in addition, the sheet metal wall panel cladding system has no weather resistant barrier as required by code and must be removed. And I believe I brought this up in the operations meeting. Are there other buildings that may also been built by the same contractor that we need to check out to see if those are also up to code and possibly have other costs? And when were these codes that no longer meets? When, are these fairly new codes, so these, this building was built in two thousand or moved in? So do we have any issues that we need to look in there?
Weather barriers have been required for a long time, Director Pinkham, underneath by code. I know that there is no weather barrier underneath that exterior metal cladding on that parapet wall. It's on the inside, you can't see it from the street. I also know we're getting moisture intrusion into the building from that parapet. Our latent defect, we would have had to know about it within six years of accepting that. That is well beyond, so we have no claim against that contractor. I have not gone back to look to see if that contractor constructed any other schools, which is a second part of your question there. And I will make a note to do that.
Yeah, I have a few questions. So what you're asking us here is to approve an increase in the budget for these projects.
Correct.
Have these projects gone out to bid yet?
No, they have not gone out to bid.
Is there any risk in us upping the budget before it goes out to bid? Are we sending a signal that, oh, we've got more money to spend?
We need to have your approval before we go out to bid because if we were to receive high bids, Director Peters, and then come back to you and you say, no, we're not going to increase the budget. We have had a lot of contractors spend a lot of time bidding a project in which we would have a lot of egg on our face with the construction community. And so generally, it's good practice to go and get the board's approval prior to bidding a project. If you know the project is going to come in over the approved budget, get the board's approval to increase that budget, then go out and bid your project. We're not acting in good faith when we know Ballard is going to come in approximately four million dollars over what the board's approved and then come back to you after the fact and request a budget improvement, a budget increase, so.
What kind of analysis went into your, your estimate here that it will go over the previous budget?
We have a detailed cost breakdown of these requests that we're seeking your approval on. From the architect and from his envelope consultant, they have looked at it. They're bidding roofing projects all the time and so they're very familiar. And it's a niche market that they specialize in, they're very familiar with what roofing systems cost.
And then you mentioned an example where we would change the kind of flashing that we use. Instead of metal, we would use a fluid applied, fluid applied, I'm imagining some sort of tar-like material, is that?
It's, that would be correct. It is an asphalt emulsion fluid applied product. It is to retain the profile that you see on the street so that it has a similar profile as to what it would have historically. In this case, we're talking three-quarters of an inch.
Okay, so actually, don't worry, where I'm going with this is, so if this is the, the new approved way of doing flashing, are we learning something from these projects that we can use towards future projects so we don't have to replace things?
The new approved way would be to use this, the metal coping flashing. This is an old way that has been used. There's wind uplift codes involved in this that do not allow us to use the method that we would really like to use because the wind uplift codes require a three-quarter inch increase in the height of that parapet terracotta. It will visually have a three-quarter inch increase. And we have been directed by the landmarks committee not to use that. We have been asked to use the historically accurate methodology.
Alright, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're being historically accurate and?
At a greater cost.
At a greater cost, alright. Thank you, well that, that answers my question nicely. Alright, any other, oh, Director Pinkham.
Yeah, sorry, something just came to mind to you here about Ballard High School and that it's not required by code. Shouldn't have that been caught at some inspection point that, hey, here's something that isn't up to code when we accepted the final construction for Ballard High School? And why, you know, it took us then fifteen years to find out.
I would agree with you, that should have been caught when it was constructed. I will note that school district construction has come a long way from envelope consultants. We now utilize envelope consultants and we watch them and have them inspect the work of contractors who are performing that work. At that timeframe, that was not common at all to use an envelope consultant. I think we as project managers in a construction industry in the two thousand timeframe probably didn't understand the complexities of roofing systems, the expansions, contractions, and so we didn't use envelope consultants as an industry. Today, it's standard to have an envelope consultant on your design team to prevent problems just like this, so.
Okay, yeah, so then that was kind of my follow-up question then, whoever approved this or accepted this building as being up to code, would we have any ways to go after them saying, hey, you approved this, but even though we're beyond that six years or whatever, but it was still approved to meet the code, but it's because we didn't have the proper people in place at the time to do that envelope?
Six years is the normal latent deficiency period that you can go back and make a claim.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about the construction and the construction in a sense being faulty or whatever, but whoever approved it gave it the stamp of approval, yes, this meets the code. Would we have any venue to go after them, hey, you said this was up to code and, but we find out X number of years later, even though it's beyond the construction builder's six-year warranty or whatever they have, whoever approved it or certified it, seems like, would we have any repercussions there?
I'll explore that with Noel and put that in a Friday memo to the board.
You're not talking about school board directors or formal.
Director Harris.
Could you explain in layman's term what an envelope consultant is? And is this a system to help spread the risk and have an independent party sign off my tracking?
An envelope consultant helps you, guide you on your building exterior and your, both the walls, which we refer to normally as cladding, and the roofing systems. And they help guide you because they are, lots of different materials are now utilized and they all have different expansion contraction coefficients based upon temperature. And so they help to make sure that the system that's being proposed works well together. And then they also look at, you know, if you're proposing materials that are all thirty years duration, are you proposing materials that are all twenty years duration? So you have a system that's going to last all this, you don't want a component to fail that's, yeah, exactly. Ten-year, use a ten-year component and a thirty-year component. Or if you are using a ten-year component, you want to recognize that and then budget accordingly to repair that ten-year component so you get the longevity out of that roofing system. But that's what envelope consultants do. And then they work with the architects during the design phase and then they observe the work that the contractor's doing to make sure. And then they work with the architects during the design phase, and then they observe the work that the contractor's doing to make sure that the work that he is performing is being constructed as was intended in the contract documents. And so, using Director Pinkham's example, they would have made sure that that waterproof barrier was there underneath that cladding.
Okay, thank you. So the next item, it's item 15, that is BTA four approval, approve amendment number two for contract P 5034 with Lydick Construction Incorporated for Robert Eaglestaff Middle School Synthetic Turf Athletic Field.
Yes, this was an issue that the school board asked us to go back and look at. What is the infill, infill material that we should be utilizing on our synthetic turf? We did that, and we formed a committee to analyze those types of materials. The committee recommended that the board consider cork, which is a natural product. But they also recommended that we consider TPE, which is a thermal polymer elastomer, thermoplastic elastomer. And it, the reason that those two products were recommended for consideration was they have similar maintenance characteristics as SBR crumb rubber, so we wouldn't have to train our staff for the different materials that we would potentially be proposing. They're all similar from a maintenance characteristic. They are similar price points. Both are slightly more expensive than SBR crumb rubber. Cork is approximately 50 cents a square foot more expensive. TPE is approximately a dollar more expensive. And so this, we think, addresses the health concerns surrounding SBR. We are going to continue to bid TPE and cork against one another. So because we have concerns on our committee that cork will become a more popular product and could potentially either be hard to get a hold of or not available. Hard to get a hold of, meaning that there are so many, there's approximately 1,000 synthetic turf fields replaced across the United States every year. And if this material becomes more popular, we're concerned about its availability. And then we're also concerned that lack of availability will increase the price of cork. Having TPE as a competitive second alternative hopefully will put us in a good bid position, so.
Director Blanford, and then Director Harris.
When you were discussing chrome rubber and the two alternatives that we're considering, when we were first talking about that, I think there was some conversation about the health concerns that are associated with chrome, with chrome rubber. Can you describe where we are in that conversation? Is it, it seemed to be, there were many that felt that it wasn't an issue, some that felt very strongly that it was. Has that evolved since the last time we talked?
It, it has evolved since the last time we talked. EPA did issue an update in December of 2016. But their update also concluded with remarks, further study is required. State of Washington has also issued a document that indicates that they do not believe there are health concerns associated with chrome rubber. We know from the work we've done on this committee that the state of California is doing a very in-depth study of chrome rubber. We anticipate that report will be issued in 2019, and that will become the definitive report that people will point to. And so we heard the board, we formed a committee. We recognize there are community members that do have health concerns associated with chrome rubber. And so we think cork, which is a natural product, and then the thermoplastic elastomer, which is the product utilized in the manufacture of IV tubes, are two good alternatives, and we looked at it also from the maintenance aspect as well, so. So that's where we are, and we're thinking 2019, hopefully, state of California's report will be definitive.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for the efforts that you all made this last year and the efforts of your committee. Hugely, hugely appreciated. That was extraordinarily responsive. It's also true, isn't it, that the Los Angeles Unified School District has not been using chrome rubber for, I think, five years because of those concerns?
Yes, that is true. I don't know the duration. I know Los Angeles Unified does not use it. There, their concern is because of the temperature, the heat gain, and then it off-gassing. That's the concern there. We don't have the same problems as for the heat gain and the potential breakdown of the chrome rubber and it volatizing that, because our temperatures just aren't as hot for the extended duration. But that's the concern there.
Okay, and then I would again point out the volatility, if you will, of scientific study. In my world, Daubert and Fry motions, and whether or not it's quote junk science. And we had concerns last year about whether EPA and CDC were over-mandated and underfunded. And given the choice of the appointee for the EPA by our current president, whose name I can't say out loud, I'm not holding my breath, I guess. But, but most importantly, thank you ever so much for hearing us and, and putting forth all this good work.
Thank you.
Director Burke?
I want to concur with that, and one of the things that resonates for me, that cork is a naturally occurring material as compared to chrome rubber, is that, is that truly ground-up tires? Is it a waste product?
Chrome rubber, yes, it is.
And then TPE is petroleum-based. So that, there's a natural draw of the three to a cork-based product.
Director Patu?
A lot of curiosity, how many of our schools are actually, still have that foam rubber that actually, that we've been talking about that might be dangerous to the health?
All of our schools currently have chrome rubber. I believe we are going to be bidding six schools this year, and will be, for replacement this summer. And that those schools will either have cork or TPE, and I hear what Director Burke just said, so.
And how do you choose which school actually gets it?
They're on a replacement schedule right now. And as we're moving forward and replacing those synthetic turf, we are replacing them with cork or TPE is, was the recommendation, to replace them with either cork or TPE.
So do you base your school choosing by actually how long they've actually had those in their fields?
We base them on some testing that we do. We know that synthetic turf has a duration of approximately 10 years. We also do testing, and it's called a GMAX test, to see what the resiliency is of that synthetic turf, to see if we need to replace it, so we maximize the use of the field and get, you know, the biggest bang for the buck that we've spent. And so right now, all of our fields have a replacement schedule. But as we end the use, you know, as they come near the end of their useful life, we're testing them more to see when we need to replace those, Director Patu.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of questions. What does the University of Washington use on its fields?
Chrome rubber.
Chrome rubber? Okay, because I remember they were concerned about this, and they were looking into this issue as well. Okay, and then you mentioned earlier that you're concerned about the cost of cork might go up because of its popularity, and so there's like a scarcity argument you're, you're making. But couldn't you also make the argument conversely, that through economies of scale, if there's a bigger market for it and there's greater production, it could benefit the district because the price could go down?
It's a limited resource, and so the concern is that it potentially will go up, because it is a limited resource. The, the trees need to grow in order to extract the cork from, so. So that's the concern. Director Peters, now you could argue that suppliers will see an economic opportunity and more, more trees will be planted. Yes, that, that would be, but right now, the concern is it's future availability if other districts make this choice as well.
Okay, so you're looking at both options right now. All right, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments about this item? Director Pinkham?
So then the total cost, the 1.8 plus million or whatever for this cork field at Eaglestaff, is that then the total cost to put in just cork? Or is that in addition to if we would have went with chrome rubber, it's going to now cost another 1.8? So I just want to get clarification on the costs, as it looks like one of the presenters was talking about, well, if it's 50 cents more per square foot, and you're saying 1.8 million, that's a lot of square feet.
Yeah, that's, the chrome rubber was like 1.7 million. I'd have to go, I think we have the bid tab. Yes, we do have the bid tab. For the I don't have the markups on top of this, but the difference in the subcontractor price was chrome rubber was 1,372,000, and cork was 1,457,000. So, and then the contractors overhead markup are put on top of that. So you can see from a bid standpoint, it was a difference of approximately $75,000.
So then what you're asking for us to prove isn't the 75,000 additional cost?
I'm asking you to approve the 1,884,608, which is the subcontractor's class plus the general contractor's overhead markup and coordination efforts of installing that field. It's a change order to Lydick's contract. Lydick will provide the construction coordination for this project. They'll be working with the subcontractor to make sure they get the product onsite, on time, installed on time. There's a drainage system that goes underneath this. They're, Lydick's responsible for overseeing all of that. But this is the different, this is the amount for delivering a cork synthetic turf field.
So then the 50 cents more is just the infill is 50 cents more?
Correct.
Not the total maintenance and whatever else that's included, okay.
The difference between the two is approximately $75,000 between cork and.
Just the fill, but then cork requires, as you're saying, more irrigation or whatever, and that's driving up the cost as well, aren't?
Nope, none of these require irrigation, yep.
But there are additional costs with the cork.
There are additional costs, yep.
Okay, so just wanted that clarification as far as what that 50 cents per square foot was. Thanks.
All right, that leaves one more item on the agenda tonight. Item 16, BTA four, award contract K 5073 for General Contractor Construction Manager Services, GCCM, to BN Builders for the Daniel Webster School Modernization and Addition Project.
So similar to Ingram High School, we also went before the Capital Projects Advisory Review Board to seek GCCM approval for Daniel Webster Elementary School. The rationale there was this is a historic building, and this historic building has no drawings that, so we wanted to have a general contractor onboard to go and document what the existing conditions are, that they could anticipate they would encounter when they constructed this building. We went out to the construction market soliciting for GCCM contractors. We got two responses, one from Graham and one from BMB Builders. We went through our qualifications, and the ranking and BMB Builders was clearly the better firm. Had good experience working with historic structures. They had completed a project both for the University of Washington and the Seattle Art Museum on historic structures, and we have the same proposed team. And so we are recommending to you, well, we are recommending that BMB Builders be approved as the GCCM contractor for Daniel Webster Elementary School.
Are there any questions or comments about this item?
When you're done.
Director Blanford, did you have a question? Okay. Okay, Dr. Nyland?
I just wanted to let you know I'll be out of the district Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday on vacation, and I should be back in time for the work session on the 8. Might be a few minutes late.
If there are no more questions or comments, I call this meeting adjourned at 8:14. Thank you, everyone.